It is 6:00. This is a Town, Hennessy Border Trust's regular meeting, October 12, 2023. Town Hall, Council Room at 6:00 p.m. Number one, call to order and roll call, please.
Randy?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
David?
Here.
Number two, report from the Hennessy United Board. Barb or...
I don't think so. I remember. You went there, that worked.
Number M, I was not.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I think that everything was just getting everything ready for the one and one question.
How many people did you... You said 500 for the... I think I saw 500.
Probably.
Good, and we'll just leave it there then. Number three, Consider Approval Consent, excuse me, Consent Agenda. A, Minutes of the September Meetings. Approval of Claims as Follow. September Purchase Orders, $6,039.97. Number two, October Purchase Orders, $58,066.71. October RSTF Fund is $94,607.82. October Library Fund is nothing, is zero. October Street and Alley Fund is $2,302.41. Accept the Following Reports, Library, Police, Treasure, and Fire.
I have a question on the Consent Agenda. I noticed down here on Item M is a approval of an invoice for silver for tree removal. Is that included in these claims?
No. To my knowledge, no.
Do you know, Shelley?
Was it what?
Included in the claims in the Consent Agenda?
To my knowledge, no, because it's got to be approved.
Yeah, I don't think it was ever approved. Could do that.
Okay. How way do we get to that item, then?
I don't recall any of them.
Okay.
If no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I understand that the District Attorney ordered an audit of the Town of Hennessy and that Tuesday, the State Auditor, Auditor and Inspector's Office were here. Was this ordered by this board? Was it ordered by individuals? Are they the ones who went to the District Attorney's Office, or do we know?
I know they were here, and I know, but I... It was not from... It was... Do you know, Tiffany, if it was from...
It was just from the District Attorney's Office.
Okay. So we don't know who instigated?
Correct.
Or how they did. Okay. All right, thank you.
But they did... They were here like eight hours, and they took some stuff with them, and they said they would be back in contact.
Okay.
Do you want to add anything else?
No, I was happy to see them. Maybe it will put everything to best.
Thank you. Any other questions that...
I will add, though, that the town is paying for this, though. We do have to pay for it, even if the... With the DA requesting it, the town still has to pay for it, so just in the best of ways.
Did they give any estimated costs?
No.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I ask if they give any estimated costs.
Oh, cost, okay.
No, they came in and they said that they... Shelley and I both talked to them. They said that they're licking within a five-year period. They'll pull, depending on if they're licking at court stuff, utility bill stuff, whatever they're licking at, they'll pull in that five year, they'll pull like a three-month period and audit that and just different things, so.
Did you estimate how long it takes?
It could take months, because they're finishing up a couple of other towns before they even get really started on ours, so.
Okay. We'll move on to number five, Town Administrators' Report, Purchase.
I don't have anything... I was gonna... Before Barb beat me to that, I had the letter and everything that I was going to for now, but that's okay. But this week I've been busy with them and still trying to reconcile all the books from July and August. It's trying to get the accounting up to date is a nightmare right now, so.
Okay. Any new invoices this time?
No.
So, Mr. Mayor, I got a question. Tiffany, you said you've got copies of the letter from the audit agency, the state auditors for us?
Um, yeah. I will make you copies.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to have a copy of that.
Me too, please.
Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Go to number six, Other Scheduled Business. Discuss, Approve, Deny, Reject, and/or Take Action on the Following. A, Discussion of the Possibility, Possible Action to Approve Invoices for the CDBG Grant Number 18523-21, Using Local Funds for NODA $5,280, Cohen Group $2,275, and Craft Rentals Jennifer, would you like to make a comment or something on that?
The project is wrapping up. These are final invoices, and they... Did they fix all the list items?
Yes.
So it would be okay to pay them.
Okay. Did you check to see if they put in the thought that they were saying that they were going to put in?
Yes, they did.
Okay. I know that was a big...
Well, and then the drainage went the right way.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Right.
It isn't... All this is within budget, and we've used every penny that we said we would use.
Jennifer, I got a question, if you don't mind. Who won the... Who from the town was on the final walkthrough?
I was there.
Cliff was there, I was there, Tiffany was there, David was there.
David Traynor?
Yes. A couple of other utility folks that I don't know their names.
Melissa was there.
Yeah, female and a gentleman. And then the engineer was there, and then the contractor, Marcel.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. It's all for me, Cliff.
Okay. I make a motion...
I'm sorry, I was gonna say Tiffany was very conscious of making sure the residents in the area where we worked were taken care of in their yard, and any issues that they had, she addressed with the contractors to take care of.
I make a motion to approve the invoices for the CDBG Grant Number 18523-12, Using Local Funds for NODA for $5,280, Cohen Group $2,275, and Craft Rentals $63,522.25.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes?
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Got B, Discussion of the Possible Action to Approve Change Order Number Three for the CDBG Grant Number 18523-21, Adjusting the Project Completion Date from July 2, 2023 to October 20, 23.
So when we added that section that we put underground, the culprit that we put underground, that took some time to get the material, so it pushed their completion date out, and Brian realized he had never done the change order part of it, and we want to make it legitimate. So either the project's done, we still want to put it in the file. And so it's just that there's no funding, no changes there, it's literally just doing the paperwork to change the date on record.
A time extension.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve, let's see here, approve Change Order Number Three for CDBG Grant 18523-21, Adjusting the Completion Date from July 2 to October 20.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
And Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
C is Discussion of Possible Action to Approve All Final Invoices for the REAP Grant KF23-2.
Okay, final invoices, sorry. I was like, was that all he said? Okay. So the final invoice, we got a little bit late, so I think we got it a couple days ago, and it is with Marsall, and it is $8,994.61, and that will be paid for with local funds.
Can you get that number again, please?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve all the final invoices for the REAP Grant KF23-2 of $8,994.61.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes?
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
D is Discussion of Possible Action to Accept the Project as Complete for the REAP Grant KF223-2, and sign an affidavit for the completion form.
The affidavit for permission, that's what you're looking for?
Hold on.
Mr. Burke, were you looking for the affidavit?
No.
Okay.
No. This is something, yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept the project as complete for the REAP Grant of KF23-2.
Okay, so this is for the new one that we got you?
Could I have a second, please?
Yes, I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes?
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Project on Mitchell Road. You'll find that in your packet.
Jennifer, do you have this estimate?
I did not bring it with me, I did not know it was on the agenda, but I could want a copy.
It's American.
There.
Yeah.
I'll just see. I just want my key sheet.
I'm aware of it, I did see it a couple days ago.
Okay.
Tiffany and I had talked a couple times about it.
Can you get us that much money?
In one... One grant? Like, we're in REAP season right now, I cannot do 412 to one person, no sir. I'm sorry about that. We've talked... Tiffany and I talked a little bit this week about different scenarios and ways to do that. We've been applying for the federal grant, CDBG, to do our groundwater drainage, this is in that same area. We did hear from Department of Commerce today that as long as that water line specifically benefits those houses we surveyed, that we can use that same survey. And so we're got our mind wrapped around that one to make sure that they're true beneficiaries before we progress. But there's a combo grant, CDBG REAP, where you get the same amount, federal dollars, same amount of this, our REAP dollars for one project. It goes to one candidate, as long as you do the paperwork rights to qualifying project, you automatically get it. You really are not competing against anybody. That amount on your side is $136,363.63, crazy number. So it's over $272,000 that you will have towards this project. If you did... It's hard right now in the water sewer grants on CDBG, because they changed the scoring to be where they fund very large projects, like million-dollar projects, where people are putting, asking for $500,000 and putting in $500,000. So some of my smaller communities have applied for those that may have a $200,000 project, are not getting funding because it's all going towards people who are putting in $600,000, $400,000. So I don't know which direction you guys are going to go, but we've talked so many different scenarios, to try to have the... A limited amount of local funds used towards the grant.
Also, if we do the CDBG route, then that's federal money, and so then we have to meet the Davis Bacon wages.
Right.
So then it's going to bring the project amount up, too.
Sure.
And so I think, too, we need to talk to Cowan to see if, you know...
It should be included already.
If it's already included in this number, then, you know...
From what I understand, it is already included. Yeah.
The reason I'm asking questions is because our agenda item is to approve the fiscal Year 24 NODA REAP Resolution, so we can... Tell me what the scenario is on that. If we approve that, and then we don't have the funds to complete this project...
Whatever you obligate, however you get the money, you've obligated it, so the understanding on the folks giving you the money is you're going to have it, you're going to come up with it, you're going to cover that cost. They can't. You said you will, so you're going to have to. So you want to be careful what you do, and the resolution does... Yeah, the resolution does say, if you're pledging an amount of money, what will that be? And so you want to put that on the resolution. So if, you know, if the decision's not been made on which direction to go, or how much to put to it, then it might be hard to pass the resolution.
Well, this is certainly a project, I feel like, that we need to pursue.
I was wondering if it could be broken up, I didn't know if you could phase it out to be smaller, but then I don't know if you really want to phase it out.
Yeah.
Because I... Where it's located is just... Really doesn't interfere with anything. Getting it done, it's not like you could break it up and like, okay, this residential area is a residential area.
We also have the ARPA money that we kept it towards us here.
That's great.
Because that has to be allocated by 2024, so...
Yes.
And what's ARPA, I think it was half, fifteen?
Um, it's a little over $300,000.
Oh, I'm jealous, that's wonderful. I didn't know you had that.
I'm sorry, how much?
Don't quote me.
Okay.
It's been...
About...
It's been over six months since I went into the ARPA stuff.
So it's over $400,000?
No. No, I don't... It's not over $400,000.
So what is it? I'm sorry, I couldn't...
I was thinking a little over $3,000.
Oh, great, okay.
Well, this would be a good project to...
Absolutely.
To tag on with. I told Tiffany, other than the CDBG REAP, where it's the combo, the 272, almost guaranteed one, I was hoping we can stay away from federal, just because of all the... And it does increase the cost a little bit because of the Davis Bacon and stuff. If we can keep it just on the REAP side, it would be a lot easier. Other than the combo grant, I just don't think we're going to reach that funding level to get funded on a water or construction grant. Because it's a... I mean, it's a big project to us, but what they're funding right now is literally double this number, or more, that are getting... But people are putting in that match money, too.
So what's the max we can get on this REAP?
I'd almost go, I think in our emails we talked about, I would say about a $200,000 is what I would request. We've not funded that high. We funded last year, the highest we funded was about $159,000. One thing I... You guys accepted less on this project that you did last time, so I will remind the REAP Committee of that and see if there's... Because we do have a question on there, if you accept less funding, we would consider you become the next grant, giving you a few extra points because of that. So that's a benefit there. But, I mean, I would go for two, and we have 2.5 million to give out. I currently sit at two applications submitted. I'm freaking out a little bit. Normally, I've got like a stack, so I would go for 200,000, if they come back and say, hey, can you do 175?
This is a very important project for the school. Could they contribute if they had the means or wanted to help? Because they can't move forward with their project, and this is...
From a REAP aspect, I know for sure that donated money is perfectly fine. And as far as how to put it towards the budget on our CDBG federal grant, I'm not quite sure, because I've never dealt with that, but I could find out.
She's talking about the Davis Bacon Act. Why should that really... I've asked this question before, but about the grants, and it didn't work, and with federal money, and we told it really didn't matter.
It does on the CDBG grant. Maybe some other grants don't. Some like American-made products or steel-type things, but on CDBG grants, they follow Davis Bacon wages for these contracts, and it's prevailing wages that have to be paid, so it may be more than they're normally paying them people.
So like, is it... You're talking about the vendors that work in, and what's our city employees that go out there and inspect, or...
Our city employees that inspect are not getting paid any money through the grant?
Like, you know, because I mess with Davis Bacon Act a lot, so if an employee shows up out there, one of my employees shows up there, or any employee shows up there out on that federal project, they have to be with the Davis Bacon Act. I got to fill out the paperwork for them, and so they have to be at federal wages.
Right.
And so if I send a guy out there to look at that site, and he worked for the Town of Hennessy, we got to oblige by that.
So if you're... If the... If we put in that contract that the city employees are going to get paid on this project to do that, then we... Through the grant, then we would have to look at making sure that they got those prevailing wages. Most cities and towns, that's just...
I...
Within the scope of their job, if a water line is being done, and they go out and check and make sure it's being done to that level, or the engineer takes care of that, and then their company has that inspector. So I've not faced that, like you're describing.
I've talked to Cheryl a lot, the lady that runs the Davis Bacon Act, which is Oklahoma. So I know when you access federal money and stuff, that you could...
By the rules.
Yeah, you got to be by the rules, so...
Yeah.
That's why I warned you, you know, how that... For things that...
Yeah. Because we... I mean, we're not doing the work ourselves, we're going to contract it out. If we were doing the work ourselves, there's an in-kind labor form that gives us the formulas and the amounts that we're supposed to fall, and I believe they probably fall a fee, but don't quote me on that. I've only... I've got one that I'm doing that with now. We use their form and got all the rates and information in there. Now I will have to track it and make sure that they're getting paid, they're getting those hours, and that work is getting done.
What's crazy about it is the work's done in Kingfisher County. They might come out of Oakland City County, and we only got to pay them a fair minimum wage act in Kingfisher County.
Right, you're right, exactly. And depending on where it's at, it may cut them short and may gain them money, but yeah, whatever happens in Kingfisher, that's the prices we follow.
So if we pass this item E on the agenda, then are we pretty well committed to that project?
Unless you have another meeting and change it.
Okay. I would love to see us do it. I think it's very beneficial for the community, very beneficial for our school.
So with the ARPA money that you had spoken of, if we don't have that allocated by '24, we lose that money?
Okay.
Do we have any other projects that we're looking at to use that towards, or...
We have not brought up anything to allocate that money to.
Okay.
Was it by next April, right?
This looks like it'd be a pretty good... Pretty good project for that.
Kind of adds up. You'd be able to pay for it.
ARPA and REAP, and then the federal grant. I'm sorry, I was telling her, you could almost do ARPA and REAP, and then maybe not have to go the federal grant route.
That must be her.
Would be good.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal Year 24 NODA REAP Resolution for Waterline Project on Mitchell.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Bert?
Yes?
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, can the motion be amended to include the amount?
Of a...
On the resolution, there's a spot that says the Town of Hennessy pledges this amount of money towards the project.
So it'd have to be $412,760?
Or $200,000, or $5, or...
$200,000.
I don't think you have a resolution, Randy.
No.
We don't have a resolution.
What's our... What do we got in ARPA, about 300?
Yes.
If we could apply for the $200,000 and then the rest, the city...
So you'd need to... I'd say probably we better do about 250.
Apply for 250?
No, apply for 200.
Commit 250.
Oh, okay.
That would give us a total of 450, and this estimate's 412, so... There may be some change orders along the way, or... Or is 250 enough?
I don't think 250's enough.
But just in the application process, because we don't want to... The projects... Because we're going to put this in with the application of 412,000. So if we say that the city is going to do 250, then REAP is only going to give us the difference. So we need to request 200, and the city would put in the 212, and then if they came out more...
Okay.
Then we would have to do change orders.
That makes sense.
Exactly. But otherwise, REAP's just going to say, well, you committed 250, so we'll only give you 175.
Okay, I will amend the...
Okay, I will amend the motion then to include a commitment from the town of Hennessy in the amount of $212,760.
I'll second that. Roll call please.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Okay, we have, if a discussion allowed 30 minutes, we'll question answers to the public. Let's keep the questions short and, and we'll try to answer as best as we can. Yes, ma'am.
May I make a suggestion? That if you're going to have an open meeting, have a microphone so that we can hear. That's just, you know, just some, borrow a sound system or something. We don't, we can't hear anything. At least I can.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
Are we going to see a copy of the last latest draft of the contract? It'd be nice to have that where we could answer and ask questions. Are y'all in executive session again?
Are you asking for an executive session now?
Yeah, because you're not answering.
Obviously not.
Okay. So you're still not answering.
I would defer that question to a attorney. I don't know if it's proper to hand out a draft copy of the contract that's not been approved or not?
Well, then I'm, that's what I'm saying is then questions and answering session on the contract's a little premature. But it should be an open document until it's, till a later step. I mean, you may need to consider some of our options or suggestions when you're back there discussing and negotiating. But it sounds like it's a 3-2 vote already done.
None of those have been taken.
Are there two that just as much input on the contract as any of the rest of us?
But two, three doesn't get a vote to extend it for us to get
You're assuming it's a 3-2 vote when we haven't even voted.
I definitely am assuming.
Okay. So we haven't even had a vote. And you guys were here making comments on a draft that we hadn't even had an opportunity to discuss.
And that's what I'm asking.
And I understand what you're saying, but we still haven't approved a contract.
That's, that's my question.
So I can't give you something that we don't even, we don't even know if that's going to be final.
Well, okay, let me back up and rephrase my question then. Are you going to come up with a draft, let us look at it before you do a final vote on it?
I don't know.
That's what I thought. We have no assurance from you guys. We feel like we're getting ramrodded here. Or I know, it just seems like there is, I'm not saying there should or shouldn't be a contract. I don't, my personal opinion is I don't see why we actually need one. We never had one. The salary's already been decided. So my question is why do we have to push this through so fast to get a contract for our first contract?
I don't feel like we're pushing it through very quickly at all. This is taking weeks that we've been working on this. So I don't understand. So contracts normally take months?
Yes, they do for a public contract.
Well, this is the first one I've been involved with. I haven't been on this board for but, but a few months. So everything here is new to me.
Right.
And, and I'm just trying to take it as it comes.
Well, I'm going to be perfectly blunt is I don't trust you guys. Why? Look, replay the messages I've just been asking.
What I'm trying to get at is everything's been done secretly. I mean, there's been people that has, came out with allegations and stuff and you guys have been quiet. You guys haven't said nothing. You haven't said nothing to calm the city down or nothing. And I think that's why a lot of these people are here, because they want to hear from you guys, what you've done when the allegations came out.
And I would like to add that for, I was here last week and this was packed. And from what I have been encountering, for every one person that's here, there is like 10 or 11 that are furious about this. But they're not able or don't want to or whatever, come here and voice their opinion. And I have a question. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm new to this. Who is our mayor? Okay, I mean, all we hear is Bert talking. I, I'm sorry. Cliff, um, okay. I just, they don't say mayor, they don't say what's up there.
About a while ago Tiffany said, mayor, can we, and then Bert answered. Bert done the talking when Tiffany said, mayor, can I overturn or whatever this decision? Cliff didn't say anything, Bert did.
The reason why is because he made
And that confused her, is what she's saying. Tiffany asked for the mayor to answer, but Bert answered. That's what she's saying.
I honestly thought Bert, you were the mayor. I did, because, and that's something I put on my notes.
But I think what the town wants to know is, have you guys even worked into the allegations?
Yes.
And what did you find out?
Well, we, we're having an audit.
Well, that's on a state audit. You don't have a clue what's going on with the state audit, but what did you look into? What did you find out?
They also, we know our vehicles that we have, we have them tagged, we have them licensed. We do know that. We do have the drinks that they've said that they were gone with, they're here in this room right here. I can't remember some more of the other ones, but yes.
But I mean, and that's what I think half the towns in an uproar about. It's because we hear these allegations and you guys are silent. And, and that comes out of 10, if there's a problem or something, one of you guys make a speech or, you know, sell something out. But nothing's been said or done about this.
Logan?
Can I say something?
On one statement, I did confront, I did confront Starla.
And confront is a
Yeah, confront is an easy way of putting it.
No, what, no, I did. I said, that's not true.
Okay, I'm going to make it clear real quick. On August the 28th, I called Mr. Wen and told him of what I had found, the findings that I had. He informed me of that time to write them all down because Bert had been discussing with him for over a week about hiring Tiffany Tillman back because he was wanting her. So he advised me to write those down and to give them to all the board members and to himself. I wrote those down and I gave them to him. I also took all of the supporting documentation of everything on there and I sent it to the state. There's your answer.
So you're saying everything you wrote on that list was truthful and correct?
I have all the documentation.
I would like to see it.
That's not, that's not
No, 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 I would like to see that.
You will.
I do.
Well, there's no reason to fight over it. I mean
A text doesn't mean anything.
The thing is, we're here at a town meeting, you're fighting with each other. That's not
But I just want to make it clear, it's not accusations because I talked to Mr. Wen on that on August the 28th. And I did what he told me to do.
And it's documented. I mean
It's documented.
It's after them.
And that's why everybody wants to wait, see what comes out of the state audit before they do it.
That's right, and that's what this is about.
What you need to understand is until it's proven, it's an accusation. And if the board works anything like the school board does, what you're asking, they can't answer. If there's allegations against a town employee, just like us with the school, the board can't answer any questions.
It won't come from the board. It's coming from the state this time.
The board cannot answer any questions regarding a town employee with allegations if it works like the school board does. We can't answer them.
But they don't work exactly the same, but I'm like
There shouldn't be that
But you guys could say, look what we found, let's see, how we did it.
But you guys did look into it, what you guys found?
Your silence makes you appear like you're trying to hide something.
I think they're looking for you, sir, attorney.
I am looking for the attorney because I would love to answer, but I do not want to
One thing too, that
Step out of line.
Because now the state auditors can, and we're also
Everybody who's worked for the city is under investigation.
But yes, I have personally. I've talked to the DA, I have talked to the state auditor. It's all clear. Like, that's the reason Mick Doughton's been here was because we went to talk to the state auditor. We of the board voted the audit down in March. Because we get audited every year, you know, so we, we voted not to have them come in and do an audit. So, you know, when the allegations came out, I talked to the other board members and stuff, and I did pursue it. It was not getting answered, you know, so let's bring the state auditors in, let them do their job.
Okay, well then is it, is it the state auditors every year or are they forensic?
We have our own private firm that we usually have auditors come in and do our audits.
And who's responsible for, for giving them, they, they just come in and they have things they pick or?
We hire
They come in and they go through all of the financial records and then they give us a list of stuff that we have to pull for them. Or a lot of times they just, we show them where it's at and they go in there and pull it themselves. We do not give them, like, say, we want you to audit this. No. They come in and look at all of our financials and they tell us what they want to audit.
So do we use the same auditor every year?
It has been used.
So can we think about maybe changing it to auditor every year?
That's fine. I'm going to suggest in January that we go out for an RFP to, to see how much it's going to cost to change auditors and to see if we can get any other bids.
Well, before we get that deep, let's just see what the state audit says. I mean, because if they're doing a good audit, we don't need to change them.
It's a different type of audit.
Well, yeah, it's a totally different type of audit, but still, I mean, if there's wrongdoing in the, in the city house, that auditor should find it.
Well, I mean, if we're going to keep using the same old people, like the same auditor, the same attorney, blah, 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 let's get some contracts drawn up. Same-o, same-o.
But the audit that they provide the city
If we're not going to change anything.
It has a clause in there specifically stating that they don't look for any kind of wrongdoings or anything like that, you know? Whether they've found them, but they're not looking for them.
How, okay, I want, I need a question. Who's, who knows, okay. How extensive is this audit?
Which one?
Which one?
This one that we just went through? What on the, the state one? Is this the forensic fraudulent?
Yes.
Audit?
The state one is
What is the difference between this one and the one we have every year?
The state came in and they are going to look at pretty much exactly what our annual, annual one does. And if they find anything, then they will continue on. If not, then it's done.
So how will we know when it's over?
They explained to us.
We don't know how long it's going to take.
They said it could take years.
So it's just a, just a little bit more excessive or whatever you, how are you, yeah, yeah, what you said, Ashley. So, I mean, they, I mean
To tell you, they came in, they looked at every single cash drawer that we had, any, any caches in, they counted it off.
Because to me forensic is like they're going to take the computers, they're going to take this, they're going to bang it out, everything, and they're going to examine it.
And they, they came in and they counted all the cash in the building, which actually we had a dollar eighteen too much, a dollar eighteen too much in all of our cash. So, but then they sit down at our computer and they started pulling information off of the computer. They asked for reports, we showed them reports and all of that.
So they like, don't get like the hard drives or any of that to where they could go back?
He had access to everything.
He downloaded a lot onto his, or his hand in documents.
He sat at the desk and downloaded for a long time. He, he had full access to whatever he wanted and he did it.
I mean, if they took the hard drives, we would be dead in the water. We wouldn't be able to operate.
Well, no, no. You never know. Some people do go in and shut the town hall down.
Well, I mean, I'm sure if they find something, they will come back and shut everything down, but they took what they needed on flash drives and stuff.
You really want them to shut the town down or do you want to turn on your tacks tomorrow morning to get water?
Well, let me tell you some about some other stuff that I want to bring up. I want to know how in the hell your water bill can be $23 and then your sewer's $53. What the hell do you guys estimate that's on? Because for four months, my water bill was $18 and my sewer bill was $50. Now what do you guys estimate that on?
That's going to be later on in the meeting. We're going to talk about
Okay, okay.
But like what I was trying to say, can you guys comment on what you guys been doing? Because I mean, that would settle the town down because everybody's going to be watching his video to see what you guys say. The ones that can't be here, they're waiting to hear what you guys say about it.
Oh, we are, we didn't answer nothing.
Just, you know, they're like, we're looking into it instead of blowing people off would go a long ways. And, and a lot of people would calm down.
Well, I've looked into some of it, but I'm not saying anything without the town attorney telling me it's okay to say it because it involves other people.
Well, and I understand that, but I mean, you come out and saying you're looking into it and you're going to talk to the lawyer and, and let, you know, let social media run with it, half the people in this town would probably settle down. But with the way it's been brought up in, in social media, everybody sees it, no one's hearing anything else but that, they're going to run with it. I mean, here's the best thing you can say. The state auditor has been called in. The state auditor is going to do their job. You know, it can take from, you know, two, three weeks to two or three months or five years. You know, but they've, they've been called in, so there ain't nothing we can do about it now. They're here. But I mean, just, just putting something out there for the town to see.
Yeah, because this took a citizen to get the state auditors here.
No.
Right?
The DA said it was based on everything that was going on Facebook and all the accusations and all of that.
You guys didn't put it out on Facebook.
No.
You guys didn't.
Well, I hope they wouldn't do that. I mean, that, that, to me, that's not what a town board should do is rely on social media every year.
There were other things that brought it to all of our attention.
I'm sorry. I can't
But when the allegations came out, the town thinks you guys should have stepped up and said something.
We didn't hear it from the town board or anything that something was going on.
There wasn't a concern from you guys, like a citizen. I just know, we went through a mess for this town with the school, coaches, all of that kind of crap. And everything kind of settled down and people maybe thought differently of Hennessy. And then, and then this, it's embarrassing. It's embarrassing.
Well, it would be embarrassing if you didn't have a witch hunter in here for a few months trying to see what they could pull up.
You see, that is, that is so disrespectful.
Oh, I agree.
So as long as everybody is under oath, when all of this stuff goes on and they're asking questions
It's not a witch child if you see something and you've got a hard copy of it. Now, I, now they got to decide what to do.
I don't have a relationship with either of these two, but I am just
I don't care.
I am just an employee, a, a citizen that, you know, to be on a, you have the trust of our community. And whenever there's anything
If they got the trust of the community, then why aren't you the one that walked out of the meeting when he didn't like what was going on?
I walked out of the meeting because I was approached with a phone
I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about the trustee that walked out of the meeting. And if I don't address you, then don't address me.
Because the trustee knew it wouldn't do no good. It's 3-2. His vote wouldn't matter anyway.
Guys, we're, we're being petty right now. This ain't going nowhere. Argue made or fought between, it needs to stop. I mean, you guys are mad, I understand. He's mad, I understand. There's allegations flying around everywhere. Now, you're goddamn adults. Put the shit, let them do their thing and move on.
So Logan, when I, when I was hired by the board, I called and left a message for Starla to come in and talk to me about all of these accusations because they were about people still working here, not, not just me, but other people too. And so in order to figure out what she's talking about, because I can't find anything, she would not, she never even responded to me.
There were no names on that sheet and legally I cannot come and do that.
So, there was names on it because I was on there, so.
Nope, sorry. I, but legally I cannot do that. So legally you did a lot of things that was illegal.
No name.
First of all
No name.
Did I say a name? Did I say a name?
No, but that's why you can.
I can say my name all day long.
You assumed your guilt or innocence.
So her telling me that I cannot, who I am, the one at the time, the only one here. I can't, I called the DA and he told me to do it. He did, so he, he overrides the law.
No, he is the law.
No, the DA is not the law, the thing is, is, that's where people get it wrong, the DA has to follow the law. Everybody has to follow the law, that's why we live in the United States of America is because we're a law-driven country. So no one's above the law. All right, and you guys just spouting off back and forth, ain't doing shit.
You know, that's, I agree with you, what you're saying.
Yeah, let's move on and find out how we're going to fix it.
Exactly.
If there's anything to fix.
I agree with that.
Because right now, we have no clue what has been found or said because we're citizens, we can't come in here and just start going through records. I'd be pissed off if a citizen did that, they don't need to know my social security number, or how much my damn water bill is, or even my address.
I'll tell you how much my water bill is, I don't give two shits.
I mean, we're just wasting time bickering.
I'll even tell you how my sewer is, it's higher.
Get two trash cans.
I got two fucking trash cans, no one ain't.
But back to you guys, so you guys cannot make a comment on what you found?
No, they can't.
Well, next time, could you address the problems that you hear from the town, and so maybe it wouldn't get this far?
I want to see the allegations addressed.
I do too, because if Tiffany's not in the wrong, then I don't have this town and probably including me as a apology.
What I have seen so far, I haven't seen anybody's in the wrong on anything.
But, so, I mean, if you guys would just come out and, and make a statement for the town. You know, I can't go to a gas station with my last name and not get brought up in this shit.
Well, I'm sure they can't make a statement until they get a statement or get a final report.
Well, they can make a statement saying they're looking into it. They can make a statement saying that they are, they get the allegations and that they're going to make sure that they're taken care of.
That's why they hired the attorney, because they don't know, Burp said, he don't know what he's going to ask to say. Unless his attorney tells him he can answer.
And, and that's the smartest move I've ever heard anyone say, because goddamn, I wish someone would come in and do that.
Hey, I can't wait for an attorney to tell me to shut up, I'll wear myself out.
But I'm just saying, we're, we're all here wondering the same thing, and everybody's bickering and not letting these guys talk. Whether they can talk or not. So if you've got an actual question, instead of pointing out people, ask them.
Let's try to solve the problem, I think I just read it.
You can't hear you if you do talk. I'm so wound up, I'm sorry, you can't, you go, girl, she'll tell you.
So one more thing before I leave, you guys can't make a statement about what you found. One last time for everyone to hear, can you make a statement or can you not? Do you want to confer with your lawyer?
At this time, we haven't found any of the accusations to be true.
And you looked into all of them, though?
And we're looking into, and we're still looking into it, we're down to have the audit done, and so that's, we are looking into it. We're, we're not going to deny anything, we will have transparency, and the only thing that we want is the best thing for Hennessy, that's what we want.
So next time allegations come out, let's come out with that, instead of letting the town stew in it. Because, I mean, if you've ever been part of any community, one person spreading rumors will spread like wildfire unless you put it out.
I'm tickled to death that the state auditor was here, and I can't wait to see the results. Starlet said she sent them a copy of the letter, gave it to the DA, so I'm sure they're going to look at everything on that list.
So nobody in this room happy with that? State auditor's here like everybody wanted, right? And no matter what the state auditor says, everybody's going to go with it, right?
I bet you state they don't, they won't be giving that.
No, because if I got something to say, I'm going to say it, I ain't waiting on the state auditor, I ain't waiting on nothing. If I got something to say, I'm going to say it.
You can say it, but it's not going to go anywhere because they can't answer any questions.
Well, oh, Shane has a question.
I wanted to apologize for my language last time. When I moved here, I was a freshman. When I was trying to go with, and I had a lot of injuries and stuff, and memory, Dr. Betts, but I was wanting to speak. Come more like this, and not as irritated and mad as I was. So I apologize, apologize for swearing, and that's my only apology on that. But yes, exactly what he said, there's allegations, no one knows what's true. All these hens in this town, quack, quack, and the men are worse.
Yes, thank you.
The old men, they go and quack, drink your coffee, they're worse than damn hens at home. And we all get to hear that, he gets to be like me, who was the town's biggest drunk, this guy, and has now been in summer over five months. And I get a whole bit of crap, I go through a damn room, I spend a little time in the Marine Corps. My, I get it, I'm a dumb DA, that's what I am. But allegations, there needs to be leadership, what he's, that point he just slightly missed, but he was honest. Leadership can calm the crowd down. There was zero law or no law, there needs to be some kind of statement through your lawyer that, that can put a stop on them and just say, it's being best again, that's all we can say right now. What's being best again, I don't know, talk to the lawyer, what he can say just, instead of keeping quiet. Because we come in here and everybody's quiet, they can't say nothing, then they say, oh, waiting on the lawyer, lawyer gets here still. There's nothing, that's it, I would go up to him, no one knows what's up or down, just, who knows, tell what you know.
All right, I'm going to go to the football game.
Would you have a couple more minutes, if there's some more comments or questions that want to be made? If that's all, then we're going to go to G, executive session pursuant to the OS section 307 B1 to discuss the employment contract for the town administrator Tiffany Tillman. Vote to convene into executive session. I make a motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes?
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I make a motion to reconvene.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Age discussion with possible action to approve the employment of the contractor, Tiffany Tillman. Before I do, I would just like to make a statement, we had a thirty-minute question and answers and not one, anybody asked a question about the contract.
We haven't, we don't have it to look at, that's what I asked very first question.
You could have asked questions.
I did, I said, can I see the contract so I can ask questions, and you guys refused to answer.
Yeah.
He did.
You said you didn't even have anything yet.
Look at the film, look at the film.
It's kind of hard to ask questions when you don't know what's your question. And I may not have had any, but I wasn't given the opportunity.
I make a motion to approve the employment contract of the town administrator Tiffany Tillman.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
No.
David?
No.
The three are the same, you signed the top line of each as mayor. No, no, not yet, we're, you'll do that in the authority.
Discussion of possible action to change the CDs from checking account to earn more interest. I was approached by the bank that they said that they could pay us three-point-three percent interest rate on the CDs and that there's.
Mr. Mayor, sir, can you wait just a minute, I can't hear you. Just print your name and. I'm sorry, I can't hear Lieutenant Clark.
I have a question, so are we on H or I? Did we skip over H? Because this was the second year. Okay, so did we skip over H?
No.
No.
So that was just the discussion of coming back out?
No, that's what we, we asked for.
We didn't get to discuss it.
But I thought, what it looks like here is G, where you guys are going into the executive and then when you come back out, I guess that's what I thought, where it said discussion with possible action to approve employment.
No, what it's saying there is that that came out of executive session, now they're going to re-.
Yeah, but we don't get to, we don't get to discuss it.
Well, I mean, I guess I'd like these guys to answer that, so can you explain to me what H is for then? On the, on this?
They voted to hire her.
We voted to accept the contract out of the three to two votes.
So that was you just coming out, not discussing it, but just.
Yeah, no discussions.
Uh, just coming out and announcing, it's not a discussion, it's an announcement, right?
It was their discussion.
Let, let them.
I made a motion, and it was seconded.
Well, we don't, we didn't know anything, we don't know what was discussed, that's what he had mentioned, like, when Randy was talking and said, we don't even know yet, we haven't done anything, we haven't got anything to discuss, we don't, isn't that what everybody else got?
That's what the executive session was for, we went back there and discussed the contract.
Okay, but, yeah, right, so when, when he asked about that, you said, you're getting ahead of everything, we don't even have anything to discuss yet.
We didn't have an approved contract, because we have to approve the contract for.
Well, so when were we supposed to discuss this tonight, or to make our comments then?
Before the.
Up here.
Before we went to executive session.
In the thirty-minute public one?
There's another citizen's comments later.
But what does it matter, they've already voted.
I understand, I thought if you were wanting to know what happened, okay.
There's citizens' comments early in the agenda, right after the consent agenda, and again at the end of the agenda.
Okay, and the attorney just left, and one of the things I wanted to ask about last week, when he said, at, at least with me, he led us to believe that with the headhunters for this job, it's almost impossible to get somebody to, to take these jobs. And there were more than one applicant, there was more than two applicants, we found out. And, I mean, and we also talked about people had checked other communities this size, they don't have that kind of a hiring package. And it usually, is it usually the applicant that makes the suggestions or requests or demands on what her salary and benefits are? I mean, is that normal?
That's how it happened.
Huh?
You don't know that that's how it happened, that's not the case.
So you guys were the ones that offered that package?
Yes.
So every applicant that would have come through here would have been offered that same package?
Yes, based on their experience and their experience, education, everything going forward, we, we look at that as a whole. And we did have other applicants that did have, that had pay requirements. And, I mean, that's something that they put on the, their resume.
And severance and contract requirements?
That was, that was something that was, Steve Whitlock with OMMS actually had suggested that we were more than likely not going to get someone without a contract.
But did you ask the other two applicants if they wanted a contract?
So we did not, I mean, I don't know how deep, deep I'm supposed to go into this.
We weren't hiring.
There was also something said that, well, if someone doesn't like her on the board, they can fire her. But every, most people, I think Oklahoma is a right-to-work state or something.
An employer-will state.
Okay, and what does that mean, Bird, I'm.
That means the employer can be dismissed for any reason.
Right, all of us are at the will of our employers, why should this position be any different? Where you're given a severance package and a contract?
Is that funny?
No, I'm just saying I wish the attorney had.
Yeah, I do too, I mean, isn't he being paid to be here?
He's being paid by the Howards.
But, I mean, that's what he said, that's what he led everybody to believe, is, boy, you guys are not going to get anybody else here.
I'll tell you this.
Well, I just remember saying we could look at the contract after you guys had negotiated some terms for public input and hit it backwards. Yeah, but it's too late after you accept it. I can't give you any input, I may have had some crappy ideas, I may have some good ones, but now the world will never know.
But we also, if we took everybody's input, we'd never have a contract signed.
I just think, you negotiate the base terms, you, you, we never saw a proposed final draft, we may have all said, hey, that's great, just go with it.
Well, you may still say that.
Did everyone on the board just put input on it?
Oh, yes.
David, were you able to put input on the contract?
I was, yes ma'am.
Harold? Everybody was.
Yes.
And how many were changed of your two? Can you ask that again, Frank? How many of your proposals were accepted on the new contract, one percent, two percent? I would say, I want to give you an estimate. Sure. I would have to, I would have to count. I don't want a calculator. Okay, I made thirty inputs, and I want to say there's three or four, maybe, maybe, it was more than two, three or four changes that I have put in, yeah. Well, we appreciate you.
Okay. Back to the discussion of the possible action to change the CDs and checking accounts to earn interest. I was approached by the bank that we have CDs that they're making like point-two, five percent, that they're going to offer us on a six-month, it's like three-three. If we go to eleven-month, it was going to be four-something, and also there's a, a way maybe to get interest on our checking account. And so I was bringing this before the board to see if we can do that, so we can have some interest on the CD, higher interest on the CDs, on the checking account that we have at the bank.
I've been seeing some banks advertise over five for one UCD. Of course, they're not local banks, but if they're. Are we getting interest on our checking now?
Yes, it's not very much.
And we're getting one on CDs, point-two-five.
Point-two-five, I'm not exactly sure if that's right, but it's.
How much is a CD?
I do not know.
I mean, that would make a difference. Our CDs run a range from two-hundred thousand to almost a million and.
Oh.
I consider one of them.
That would, yeah.
And they can... they would let us do this without any penalties?
That's some sizable money. I'm almost of the opinion that we have our treasurer make some calls and shop that around.
Did you do that?
Would there be a disadvantage out of taking it out of a... out of a bank here in town?
That the town's not doing business with the town.
Yeah, and I'd be worse than the guy, I agree.
I personally think the town should do business with the town. My personal opinion.
Well, I agree.
The CDC hasn't ever been able to match Interbank.
And I agree with you, but however, Interbank is owned by a big corporate bank. It's... I do understand they've got a branch here, and we... I'm all in favor of supporting them, but I feel like we've also got to...
Do the best for the community.
We've gotta do the best we can with the taxpayers' money.
I agree.
Can we ask questions? Why do you know about... What bank did you want to change it to?
Me?
Any... I mean, any bank.
We've got it with banks here in town.
So why would you want to change it out of town?
Well, if we could get to a 3%...
If it wasn't for the town people, you guys wouldn't have that money or whatever.
Correct.
So why change it out of town?
If we could get to a 3% more interest on a million dollars, I just think it's prudent to the taxpayers to get the best we can.
I don't think that's a good idea. And I know half of this town ain't gonna think it's a good idea. Everybody's gonna think, if you guys are gonna shop out of town, why are you guys pushing shop local?
And Gina, I agree, and I said it's worth something for us to keep it here. And I'm thinking a percent or so, but if we...
You guys are gonna keep on changing everything, and everybody's gonna think, well, what's worth staying here for?
You're not allowing me to answer, so...
Well, if anyone's not allowing me, if I can talk either, Bert. You are one of the ones that don't care what any of us say or think. You don't care.
Okay. I'm gonna say this, that any more propensity, I'll ask the officer to have it...
Okay, ask him to remove you. I'll walk out on my own.
There's no call for that in a public meeting.
If changing it to a different bank, does that benefit that town that the bank is in any? Do they see anything off of that?
Yes, it does.
I would say so. I mean, I understand, and I'm listening to your input, because you all are the citizens, and it's your tax money that we're talking about investing here, so...
I'm just curious. I know nothing about these things. I'm trying to learn. I don't know nothing about them. I want to know if it...
If it put more money in your local bank to be able to then loan out to other people in the, you know, in the community, it just kind of comes with the money.
So it's gonna benefit that community where that bank is more than it's gonna benefit?
Yes, yes.
Well, I guess it benefits... it benefits us around by the way. What you're saying is the more percentage of interest on it, right?
And when you've got money here in a local bank that is part of a big corporation, your money that you've got in there is going to help those other communities anyway. So it's just a... it's just kind of a balance. But I do agree that we should try to keep it locally, and I think it's worth giving up something to do that. I was just wanting to see how much we could get somewhere else and then make a prudent decision.
Is there a way to get the bank we have it at here in town now to put in more to match these other banks?
Well, I think that's what... correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what Cliff is...
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do. Yes. And my information is like three months old, too. It's just took a little bit of time to remember to put this on the agenda, so it could be different. It could be higher, I don't know. But interest rate has gone up on housing and stuff, so it may have gone up on the CDs on stuff. I just need to ask permission to go ahead and pursue this or give somebody permission to pursue this.
I think we should probably have the treasurer go ahead and... and let's go ahead and do it locally if...
Do you have a recommendation of who you want me to call?
No, I'm saying if we go ahead and do it locally, that talk to them and see if that rate's gonna hit.
I don't really need to make that a motion.
Yes?
I like the paperwork, huh? It's actually what the interest rates are instead. Have to get... we're just seeing if having her go talk to them and bring it back to us.
Right, that's what we're doing, yes. Right. We're giving her the authority to go out. And look at the CDs and the interest that we can get. That's what we're doing. Yes, David?
Mr. Mayor, just a reminder, Mr. Burge may not remember this. We've already asked her once to do this in one of our previous meetings. I can't tell you which one. And if she hadn't got that done, I...
I did do that, and I printed it off, and it was on my desk when I was on vacation and nobody went and got it. I had told Scarlett and I had told Bert that I had that done for you guys.
Okay, so you did it.
I did do it.
You did do it, but, okay. So, but we didn't get any paperwork on it, it got taken off your desk? Is that what you're saying?
I believe I gave it to Bert.
That's... yeah.
Couple months ago.
I specifically remember us going over this in a meeting. I guess not anything. I'm not trying to ambush you.
No, I didn't like that, I did.
I'm just trying to remind everybody that we've already gone over this once. I got a recommendation.
I think that's where these numbers came from, that Cliff said he's had forgotten.
I got a recommendation.
Yes, sir.
I agree with Harold. I recommend we table this if we're gonna task Shelley to do anything else. Give her some time to do it, and let's bring it up at our next meeting.
Okay.
That's my recommendation. So we can move on.
We gotta give her permission, Harold.
Yes, we gotta give her permission to do it.
Okay. Very good.
You gonna make that motion, David?
I think that is enough to make a motion.
Not a motion? We just...
Can we motion that out of this item I? Doesn't look like we can.
She won't need permission just to call and get interest rates?
Okay. Shelley, can you do that for us again, please?
Yes, sir.
You want to table then item I?
Yes.
That's my recommendation. Thank you, sir.
We need more information.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. Moving to J, discussion of possible action to install camera system in Town Hall. Tiffany, would you like to... I know we talked about having some cameras, and I know it was like here at Town Hall?
Yes.
And there was like, one with eight cameras and one with 10 cameras?
Six and eight?
We got one?
Yes, there's a quote in here, for Tiffany. This, no. I didn't... you didn't send it to me. I emailed the votes, too.
In a separate email?
Because I think it was like $4,000.
What does this say? It says water department.
No, that's for...
So I got a quote from Scout Systems out of Stillwater. This gentleman is one that Jack Cork had recommended to me. So it's an eight-channel, it includes a monitor, a 55-inch monitor. And we did do a... eight cameras, and then we also did a quote with six cameras. This would include the boardroom, it would include outside, both the drive-thru and here. It would include everything, and it'd even be voice-activated. So you would get voice out of it, too. The six-camera is 3860, and the eight-camera is 4875. It's within my spending limit, but I wanted it to come before you guys, because to me, this is something that we truly need, and I would like you guys to back it.
Can I ask you a question? Is there one of those systems that would allow you to upgrade and add cameras to them? Because if so, I'd suggest you get one that's got open ports, so that you don't have to...
This one has... it does. This one can have, I think, up to 16.
Okay.
And ours is only... we're only requesting either six or eight cameras.
Is there any monthly monitoring or anything, or are we self-monitoring?
No, it's gonna be self-monitor. It's gonna have a 60-day backup. So you could go back 60 days and pull it off of there.
So will that be like a cloud storage or like a hard drive?
It's a hard drive.
Good.
Do we currently have cameras?
No.
No.
It would be nice to have that.
I think this would be a really good thing for safety, because, you know, the back door's never locked. So you guys up there, and it takes a minute for you to hear the door. So I think that'd be...
I couldn't...
$1,000 between two cameras.
It costs more than $1,000 to come out and carry it.
So it will record when it...
Okay, which one do you want to start with? Do you want the six or the eight?
I would like to go with the eight camera. I want to make sure that everything is covered. There's one outside, I think one in here, one at the drive-thru, I think one at the front door, and that would allow several to be able to go around up there. We did count it, eight.
You might want to put two on the driveway.
Going back.
Yeah, so this mag number, and you got the drivers in.
Well, this is a... this is a 38. This is a 4875.
I'd be putting one about that, because I always live the floor.
So do we need... I'll be there together.
I make a motion to install camera system with the eight cameras for...
4875.
For 4875.
Scout Systems.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And once I give him the approval, he said he could get it within five days and get it installed pretty quickly, so...
Discussion with the possible action to approve the cemetery pavilion add-on. Find that in your... I know we talked about this several times, several meetings, and we've sent it back several times. And I look like I'm confused, because I don't see it. I haven't seen it.
What's wrong with the one with it? Am I digging up that?
No, this was out of Abra.
Oh, okay.
Out there. Well, Keith Dawes came and asked me, because he said I had turned this thing in like numerous times. And so he was asking me...
You do know there's a foreign driver that's made it here?
In the middle of the road?
Just east of the road to the way up.
But I don't remember why we kept sending this back. Harold, do you remember why we kept sending this back?
Was there a wall that had people... People...
Huh?
Giving the price that we wanted. To get the contract from Daniel instructions, this person, and electric and all this.
Yeah, we had to do the whole thing.
This is a turnkey.
Turnkey deal.
Also, he told me... did you take a picture of this? Okay, so he talked to Scott Tarrant about rocking it. This $29,000 is for siding, just regular siding. And he talked to Scott Tarrant about rocking it, and if so, then add about $3,000 to rock it.
It needs to be rocked to match what we've got. The pavilion out there is too nice to, in my opinion, to add on with siding.
You go in and wear the pavilion out there, it's cemetery on the west end, it's not complete. It's open to the world. You see chicken boards, the whole nine yards. We're gonna go in there and put a storage and actual bathroom out there at the pavilion. So that's where we're at on that. I make a motion to approve the contract with the office of construction.
Roll call, please.
Sorry, I'm listening to the front door open. Harold?
Should install them cameras.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
L, discussion of possible action to approve the payment to CIC for the annual dues on the financial accounting software. This is a company that has all our information on it.
Tiffany, I need to put the price at $32,000 on it.
Yes, please.
So Computer Information Concepts is a company that we've been using. They have all of our software. They have some stuff in here that I didn't know that they did that we needed to... I know you said you've called them several times and been on the phone lots of times, but they have some good information there.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question for Ms. Tillman.
Okay.
Tiffany is, uh... I'm jumping ahead, I guess. Is this the software that our water meter software has problems integrating with? Okay.
I don't... I don't know where... I... because, I mean, we're able to upload our meters and everything to the system.
Okay. Let me tell you why I asked that question. At the OML conference, I happened by the booth of the company that sells us our water meters. And they mentioned to me that they were working with you, not you, but Shelley, on software integration problems. And that kind of stuck in my mind, and so you haven't heard anything about that?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Well, I may have a couple of more questions in the Utility Authority portion of our meeting. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You bet.
And I'll tell you, when the state auditor came in, this system was user-friendly for them. They were able to get on there, and they were... They were able to get on there and they were able to do quite a bit for just showing up and he knew the system.
How long have we been using this company?
2004, 2003.
I make a motion to approve the payment to CIC for our annual dues of $11,770.
I will second that. Roll call, please.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
M, discussion with possible action to approve the invoice from Silver's Construction for the removal of storm, I'm sorry, for the storm removal after completion. They were picking up limbs. I have a question. This totals $13,603. When was this approved in a board meeting? Not only that, they damaged a private citizen's driveway and I really think we need to talk to attorney before we think about paying this. It was not an approved, it was not an approved purchase.
So who hired them?
I'm you. Because I'm Cliff and Harold will be you.
I asked you if the town has the equipment to do it.
And I said no, and I said that they beat them up last time and you said we'll hire them.
No, I said.
And we did because we were stuck.
We used the town because that's why we bought that new piece of equipment to pick
Well, like I said, I had a citizen approach me over a month ago, it's been about two months, that their drive was damaged by this company allegedly. And he called the company and didn't get anywhere, so I would like to see this withhold payment and I would like to have the town confer with the city attorney because this was an illegal, it was an illegal move. An emergency town board meeting should have been called to approve that. Any other discussion?
Harold, David? What are we going to do, table?
Okay, we will table at this time. Number seven, new business, any matter not known which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting of the agenda in accordance with the section 311-9 Title 25 OS. Citizen comments?
Yes, I do. Since you've approved the contract and a couple of the sticking points seem to be the length of the contract and the amount of the annual pay, would you please tell us the length of the contract?
The length of contract is five years, but each year the board will have to vote on that because it has to go from each year. Now utilities can do five years, but on the board, we can only do one year at a time. And so each year it will come up to a vote for the board.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, what was the other question?
To renew the contract.
To renew the contract, correct. And I apologize, what was the other question?
The other question was the yearly salary.
Of $85,000?
Uh huh, is that what it is?
Yes, ma'am. And that was voted on over a month ago.
Pardon?
That was voted on over a month ago.
Oh.
That really had nothing to do with.
That, that's right. I forgot about that. Okay, thank you.
Counselperson report. Randy?
I don't have anything.
Bert?
No.
Harold?
I got some on this deal with the, on this. Wouldn't that, Scarlett, wouldn't that also, we supposed to go after the state funds to help us?
Yes, we were.
For the, because I think that's what Kingfisher County, emergency manager, told us that, you know, about three removal. So any action taken on that?
Nothing was left, nothing was told to me, nothing about.
Everything was left on that boardroom, if you'll recall, the night you guys went in there. Everything was written on sheets, it was all divided up, all the information was right there, it just had to be put on a piece of paper.
Well, I was hoping this, a meeting that we had with them on that Tuesday that we had, Scott was here and the people from Kingfisher, they said we didn't have enough damage to have it be qualified.
Through FEMA, but through state, it is.
Like it's going to be FEMA approved.
It can be done through the state too because I just talked to the state lady because she stopped by the other day and, but she also said with just the amount of money that with the, like if we was to get, that we could ask the state for help once a year. She said that with this amount and stuff that it would be better to hold off because.
It's not bigger?
Yes, because an ice storm or snow or anything like that could be a lot bigger. Because I gave, went over this.
Can you go back and ask for that? Should there not be an ice storm or?
You mean submit that stuff later on?
Yes.
I'm not sure.
So I have that.
Okay. David?
Nothing.
Okay. My second that. Roll call, please.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
N C Utilities Authority Board of Trustees, regular meeting, October 12, 2023, Town Hall Council Room. Call to order and roll call, please.
Randy?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
David?
Here.
Consider the consent agenda, meetings, minutes of a meeting, approval of the claims as follows. September purchase orders, $21,002.7330. October purchase orders, $98,439.30. October meter deposits rate found at zero.
You got it?
Make the motion to, per the, to the agenda.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
For my water bill?
I think that's down.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, it's E.
No, her water bill's not on there.
Oh, well.
But she's wanting to talk about her water bill.
Okay.
I got complaints about my water bill.
Okay.
I didn't have water for four months and my water bill was like 20 something dollars and my sewer bill was like 54 dollars. What do you guys estimate these sewer bills on?
The sewer is coming in.
Right.
We're going to talk about how the sewer is done here under David Jones's.
Okay.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. We, we got a credit back on our, which I'm not, but we got a credit back. What, what happened to, all of a sudden there, we, we get a credit back? I mean, did somebody, I mean, how, they cannot over-read or anything because they're not physically reading, they're just using their little.
I was going to kind of get David's thing too, but I'll go ahead.
I mean, like I said, don't get me wrong, I'm not driving because I got a credit, I just wonder how did it get over-read at one point to where I get a credit back?
It didn't get over-read.
Okay.
The readings were all accurate. We had a customer come in and he was talking about his water bill and how he was calculating it and it was getting charged $6.49 too much. So we found that anybody, since the new rates went in September of 2022, anybody who used over five units in a month, they got extra billed $6.49. They got an extra unit billed in there. So we went through and we pulled everybody who was billed over five units in a month and say you got it five months, you were, had over 5,000 big gallons, then you would get five times 6.49 because it overbilled you $6.49 each of the month.
Sounds like you were like 35, 40 bucks.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's what we had to go through.
Discuss, accept, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following. A, discussion with possible action to approve all final invoices for the REAP grant KF23-2. Make a motion to approve all final invoices for the REAP grant KF23-2. I'm sorry?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
B, discussion with possible action to accept the project as complete for the REAP grant KF23-2 and sign the affidavit for completion form.
Make, make a motion to accept the project as complete for the REAP grant KF23-2 and sign the affidavit for completion form.
I second that. Roll call, please.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
C, discussion with action to approve the year, fiscal year 24, note of REAP resolution for the water line project on Mitchell Road. That was for. 212,000? You got that?
I got the wrong cover.
212,760.
Right. I'll make a motion to approve fiscal year 24, note of REAP resolution for the water line project on Mitchell Road.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
D, discuss, discussion with possible action to approve the employment contract for the town administrator Tiffany Tillman. We have to do it on the authorities also, has to do it on both sides.
They're being seen. Going in circles. Eighty cents, eighty cents, he has to go on both ends. I'm making myself dizzy thinking.
It's all repetitive from the regular meeting.
I'm hungry.
I make a motion to accept the employment contract for the town administrator Tiffany Tillman. Second. Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
No.
David?
No. Tiffany, are you driving on the next aisle?
E is discussion with the town water and sewer building process including contents of the water bill and any recent citizens' issues.
I know there's not a lot of citizens to answer this, but has anyone had issues with like the main water being shut off and then back on with like the pressure damaging like appliances or anything? I'm just curious if anyone's noticed, like if it's hard on like hot, I haven't personally, but I just have read like it can be hard on your hot water heater and like your things just because of the pressure. So I was just curious and it's a double-edged sword because I'm a huge advocate on fixing, you know that, I'm all about water and sewer. So it's not that I don't want them fixed, I was just curious if we've ever thought about it, how it could affect.
If you get your warning, if they do recommend, do you leave your boss?
Writing, yeah, which we've tried. Yeah, I was just curious if that could potentially cause issues. There's nothing we can do about it.
Is this water, this is the water bill? I'm getting up front. I need a watch.
They do say electric, I think it's electric water heaters do have some issues because with, you know, if they get drained.
Yes.
And then they kind of set there and vague, so that that's.
Especially your tank.
Kill the power to those.
Tank with water heaters.
Yeah.
Oops. Electric tank.
I didn't take my, oh my god.
Okay.
Moving in?
Yeah, sorry.
All right, me and Tiffany are actually working this together. I got several water bill complaints and I'm going to be honest with everybody, I didn't think it would be fair to her to walk in here in this meeting and splatter stuff out and ask her to explain it. So I got with her in advance so she could prepare herself for my questions and I know some of you guys are going to have some questions also. If you guys don't mind, be a little patient with me and I'm going to go through this with Tiffany. It's, it's a little bit lengthy, but we can go through it fairly quickly. And I'm going to talk loud even though I'm looking the other way so you guys can hear me, okay? And Tiffany, I'm sure she'll be loud enough for you to hear her too. Go ahead Tiffany, if you want to start out.
Okay, so I want to address the sewer, okay? About four or five years ago, the town board, we used to bill the sewer based on water usage every month. So if you use 5,000 gallons in, in water, then you got billed for $5,000 worth of sewer. In the summer months, the townspeople spoke up and said, we're watering our yards, you know, we're filling swimming pools, we're doing different things. And so the board then decided to do an average during your winter months, which are usually your lower usage months. So November, December, January, and February, your usage is then averaged during those four months, averaged. And then in July, it's supposed to happen in July, the sewer average would change every July. So your sewer would be.
Even if you don't have water that month?
What do you mean you don't have water, like?
My, my pipes frozen busted.
Uh huh.
And I had, I had the town of Hennessy come and turn off my water for four months because I had to wait for it to warm up to change out my water lines.
So during that.
I had no water, but I got charged for my sewer and it was 50 something dollars and I asked Shelley about it. I called up here and asked Shelley and she told me that it's because they estimated it. I said, what are you estimating on it? There ain't no water going in, there ain't no shit.
Then you would not be billed for sewer.
I did, I did, I was.
Were you still getting amendment water?
Give me my, give me my water bill.
So, so what you're asking for Gina is a correction on your water bill, is that correct?
Something, because I was charged for my sewer on all four months.
And you weren't charged for any water?
I was charged, well, eighteen dollar, I need a copy of my water bill.
So if you have water service, then we can't determine.
They shut my water off. I asked them to shut my water off because I had water lines busted.
So then they should have inactivated your water service so you were not getting billed for water at all and then you would not be billed for sewer either.
Well, I hadn't shut it off, I don't know what they done, I really don't. My lines frozen busted for four months. I had no water. And I still got billed, sewer and everything, sewer, my two trash cans, everything.
So it's not deactivating her in the system, she still was being charged the minimum water usage, correct?
Correct.
And that's fixable, huh?
Yes.
I started saying because this, I mean, in this month, I mean, my water bill was decent and my sewer was half that of water bill. So I mean, it's like.
I fixed, because they weren't done in July, I went in and I have changed the sewer usages or the sewer averages to be reflected from last November, December, January, and February. So the sewer rates did change for the October bill. And those that went down.
I can't remember, what months did I ask for Shelley?
I'm making a note to go into, I wanted to see when it was.
Okay. And then if your sewer usage went down, then be expecting another credit because.
I don't mind paying sewer half of my water, but if there's no water going in there, you're not gonna have nothing coming out, I mean, I didn't understand that.
Okay, so.
And my sewer bill was like, well, my water bill, like the last month was, my water bill was eighteen dollars, my sewer bill was fifty-three dollars.
Okay, so bottom line for Gina then, Tiffany, you and/or Shelley are gonna work with her to get that corrected?
Yeah.
You happy with that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
We're putting in a new meter tomorrow.
Okay.
She, tomorrow.
Because I'm trying to figure out how come last month I used se, uh, three thousand gallons of water, this month I use seven thousand gallons of water.
She has an old meter, she doesn't have a new meter yet.
But I haven't changed anything. I haven't changed anything or anything.
They're gonna put your new meter in tomorrow and then.
And y'all just gonna fix it?
And then.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Now, I'm gonna go feed my cat.
So. So what we do is the sister will then go in and look at November, December, January, and February, and look at your usage and then average those four months. And that's how we put in the, um, sewer usage, we are able to put in there the sewer usage. With the average.
Okay, we're gonna use my water bill for an example, okay? Uh, I've, I've got a list here and I'm gonna go in order so, because she knows how these are gonna come out. First thing is rumor control. Uh, there's a rumor going around that we're going to correct water bills back to September twenty-twenty-two. Is, is that correct?
They've already been corrected.
They've already been corrected. Everybody, everybody hear that?
That was based on Les's comment on his credit, um, that we went back to September twenty-two.
Very good.
But you hadn't had over five units.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Okay, now what I want to do, I, I asked her to, I, I'm talking about the, the information, the categories of information that, that under this block here, when you get it in the mail, you, 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 this is the version that you get in the mail, okay? And so again, this is my stuff, uh, my darling wife's name is on it, of course. So that's my meter ID, ID number. There's my previous reading and there's my current reading, okay? Tiffany, I'm gonna let you explain the rest of those numbers across there so everybody understands that.
So this is his meter number, your serial number on your meter. So if you ever question, we have had instances where there's two meters in a can and we have found that, and I mean, this would be like Peggy, you know, how you have both two meters in one can. We have found where even though the meter is on Peggy's side that we think is Peggy's, it may, some of them we have found have been swapped. But people have gone out there and this is their meter number so that they know which meter that they're getting billed for. So if they turn the faucet on and that meter's not turning, then they would know that something was up. So that may be something Peggy, that you can check out. Uh, previous read, this is the, this is the reading, um, of the previous month. And if you'll notice these dates, eight twenty-one to nine fifteen, your bill has that on there. So that means we read, in August, we read on the twenty-first, and then in September, we read on the fifteenth. So the twenty-first of August was this read, September fifteenth was this read. This right here consumed, that's how many thousands of gallons.
Okay, yeah, can I ask a question here?
Sure.
So that is, the way the computer puts that decimal point in there, that bothers me. I, I don't, I don't expect you to fix that, but I'm just telling you that bothers me. So in real blue collar terms, that should be a comma, four thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight gallons, is that right?
Yes, it's that multiplier.
Okay.
That multiplier takes it. So that's how we know that that goes, you take that multiplier times that.
All right, okay, and you, you, I interrupted you and you were getting ready to explain that, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's okay. So we have eighty-two meters left to change out. As soon as we get the last eighty-two meters changed out, I'm gonna propose to the town board that we bill by the gallon, not the thousand gallon. So then this would be a one and this would be your comma.
Okay, got it.
Okay? Because right now we bill by the thousand.
I got it.
I've already had all the.
We got eighty-two left.
That, that something I didn't do on?
No, COVID did a little bit of the impromptu sum of that.
Yeah. Like trying to order, because they have the little chips and stuff in them, trying to order them has been a pain. So then the base charge, this is the minimum. So for your first thousand gallons of water, it's eighteen seventy-four, okay? Anything above the thousand, so three thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight, that's how much that is the consumption charge.
For, for gallons? Or for thousand gallons?
That's, that's the whole amount for that.
That's the whole amount for this, all over the thousand.
Yeah, over the thousand. Yeah. So you add those two together and that's how much your water is. And then you have sewer, um, which sewer is based on your average. And we could try to get that average to put on the bills if you guys would like. I don't think it would be that hard. Because there's, you know, there's a slot.
I think that would be a good idea if you could make it happen. I mean, if it's gonna cost us a bunch of money to buy a bunch of new software, I mean, we may not want to do that. Okay, man, thank you very much. Can, can you scroll down please? Okay, so, and like Les was saying, uh, if you notice, my current bill was eighty-eight seventy-one, but I got a reimbursement based on overpaying in the past. And the computer shows parentheses on the credit.
And that's, a lot of people don't read that parentheses as a credit, they view it as owing. And so we get a lot of people with parentheses that pay that amount instead of take the credit.
That is actually one of the main things that I wanted her to get out to everybody tonight, on the camera and on YouTube, you know what I'm saying? Because that's, that had me a little bit, uh, stumbling around in my check to myself.
I have a question, yeah. To me, they would understand it more, I'm trying to think back, if you put the current reading first and then, um, the previous, or balance with the parentheses underneath it, and it's like a simple addition problem, you know, like the main amount minus the credit and then what's left over. You think they'd pay that easier? You see, if I could flip the two, does that make sense?
I bet the fourth.
Well, we could get people that have this credit and, I mean, had a bigger credit and like down here is a credit in parentheses.
And they still pay.
And they still pay the credit.
What about highlighting, put a one on it in yellow? Or, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Or instead of calling it a previous balance, call it a credit.
Yeah.
Credit.
Well, I think it's the way that it's figured in there, they're not able to just, I mean, because it has to calculate in there into your bills, so it shows it as a previous balance, the credit, like.
As long as my bill shows, I'll be ready for sign.
Mine was sixty-four, mine was like twelve dollar credit.
More water. So Tiffany, you've actually moved through a lot of the things that I had on my list here already. Uh, one question that I have is are the new meters capable of billing by the gallon?
Yes.
So that's gonna be an easy swap.
Yes.
Once we do it, okay? Uh, I'm gonna keep going if it's all right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Calibration certification, are the, are the meters calmed and certified when we buy them?
Yes, they are and they have a, anything under an inch and a half is guaranteed for twenty years. Has a warranty of twenty years and inch and a half and above is ten years.
Okay, that's very good news.
Or three quarter?
How?
Two hour meters, three quarters?
Most of ours are five eighths or three quarters.
What about any future calibrations? Is there any recommended interval in the specs on future calibrations? It's a one-time pop, okay?
I interrupt you a second. Is that, can you interrupt me a second?
Go ahead.
Is that calibration part of that guarantee?
Yes.
That they're guaranteed to stay in calibration?
Correct, that's the part of the warranty. I included the sentence warranty, I think, in you guys' paperwork.
Okay, you've already answered my faulty equipment question. So we have a written warranty, we don't have a contract, we just have a warranty.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, uh, now what I wanted to do next is I wanted to go over those scenarios real quick so people can hear that. I think you've actually answered most of them. Uh, the first, the first scenario that I turned into, these are, these are customer complaints, okay? The first scenario I turned in was, uh, uh, water consumed was billed at fifty-one, fourteen, while the sewer was fifty-six, ten, why the difference? She's already explained that, okay? Scenario two involves two adults and one child, total bill averaged eighty-nine dollars until this year. Nine, one, twenty-three, billed for a hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-four cents, which was out of the ordinary to this family. Uh, the consumed was fifty-one, fourteen, and sewer was fifty-six, ten. They consumed five point nine three three gallons, while a single neighbor consumed six point four zero nine, yet only got billed thirty-one dollars and forty cents for sewer. So their main complaint was their sewer bill. And the dramatic increase, and I think they got a, I think they got a reimbursement already based on the law's adjustments.
Um, in that sewer too, I mean, because the computer generates these averages. Like, and we try, I try to go through, like, I would try to go through every one of them if it was gonna be a big jump to see, um, because sometimes during the winter months, you guys might have leaks. And so if you see that it jumps too high, then we can always look if, I mean, record of a leak in the wintertime and let us know because, I mean.
Can you tell if it's our software? Like, uh, when they're using water, the water comes on or whatever?
What do you mean?
Like, you see just a certain period there at a time?
If they have a leak?
Yeah, like if.
When does your meter get an alert that says, well, this is normally a five unit meter, but all of a sudden it's a twenty meter, does it kick you sort of red?
It does. And we send them out there for re-reads to see and then to do fill tests, because the new meters, we can do fill tests and it will show, um, every hour how many gallons you still charge.
Do you do, I think in, there was a, there was a meeting and a question that they have this software that a lady had complained that they had known there was a leak, they had been red flagged, but the town didn't do a courtesy call. I don't even know if the town's supposed to, or the city there is supposed to do a courtesy call, but do you do courtesy calls if you see a flag? Okay, I've just never had it happen, so that's good to know.
We either leave a, a, a door knocker or we call that.
Denise called me, my water bill was one eighty. Yeah, I figured out why it was one eighty. Usually sixty-nine dollars. I can't have a leak, if I have a leak, I'm gonna get rained on, I'm gonna take a shot. My water, my water's in my ceiling, so, uh, I'll know firsthand if I'm gonna have a leak, so.
All right, my next one is, uh, this is, this is actually the opposite of a complaint. It's a, it was a, uh, an adult and one child and his bill was actually twenty dollars cheaper than normal for us September. So he caught that as odd. However, what, what a lot of these complaints are, are neighbors comparing water bills. That's where a lot of this came from.
And, and I will tell you, everybody's water usage habits is different.
Oh yeah, I understand. Scenario four, single person billed for fourteen point two seven one at a hundred and nine dollars and fifty-five cents, but his sewer bill was only fifty-one dollars and sixteen cents, so that didn't make sense to him. But based on your averaging, I, I understand that now, and that person needs to know, know that. Scenario five, couple with no children, seven point one seven two, consumed sixty-four dollars and twelve cents, sewer was only twenty-three thirty-six. And this was thirty dollars cheaper than their neighbor who used less water, but was billed more for their sewer. So again, I'm, I'm taking it that's the averaging. Uh, scenario six, family of five, billed thirty-one dollars and forty cents for sewer. Less than a neighbor that consumed, uh, less water. So again, that's sewer averaging, I'm sure. Scenario seven, family of three, okay, you've already answered this one too. Right now, that's all the citizen complaints I have, with the exception of Gina, and you just worked with Gina here, you and Shelley just did.
Well, the one I had asked you about.
Uh, Mr. Meeker?
Mr. Meeker is an elderly man, he had a leak and he knew that. And his sewer was sixty-five dollars. And he paid that for twelve full months. And he said he came up three or four times and asked about it and he was told that sixty-five was right. He only got a twelve dollar credit. That he has not got the credit for the July yet, I mean, for the sewer.
Okay, on this bill this time, it had, like, in the parenthesis, it was twelve dollars and ninety-six cents.
All that was, was anything over five thousand gallons for the water. We have not done any credits on the sewer yet.
Okay, so he's.
On his water, not the sewer part.
So Mr. Meeker should, should get a reimbursement later or a, a credit?
Yes, for July and August and September because they should have changed the sewer rates.
I want to go back to twenty-two, like when his leak started, because he paid the sixty-five for a whole year. And that's where he was kind of, because it had only been like fifteen dollars or something all before that. And then it jumped that high during the leak.
I don't know, we've talked to Chad and his dad numerous times.
Yeah, he said he had been here, but he didn't understand.
So, so it sounds to me like he needs to, he needs to be told that he's gonna get another reimbursement on, on the sewer. Would you, would you mind, would you mind taking an action item on call, Mr. Meeker? Thank you, man, I appreciate you. And that covers what I wanted to cover.
You may not notice, I'll talk to you later. The garbage bill, you say is an average, so.
The garbage bill is an average?
No, I'm asking, how do you calculate the garbage bill? It's not based on water consumption, right?
Garbage is sewer, what do you?
I'm talking about garbage.
Garbage is based on how many poly carts you have and, or dumpsters or whatever.
So it is a flat fee?
Yes.
Okay, so it doesn't flop up and down, okay. Is there not a better way to figure out how much water you're actually using that goes down the sewer?
You come up with a meter, you can put on the sewer, maybe.
Because there are sewer flowing from that thing. But I doubt y'all are gonna want to put it on every single house.
Sounds expensive.
Just because it says town dump, and, um, my husband goes to the town dump, town dump quite a bit. We're always actively doing something, taking stuff, lamps, you name it. Um, so on so many occasions last year, I want to say. on so many occasions, last year, I wanna say, it was like forty dollars for like, I don't know, I didn't go all the time, but forty dollars for like a trailer or so, I don't really know, so forty dollars. The same amount, pretty much, he took this year, and I'm not joking, it was five dollars.
Different worker, though.
Different worker.
We are finding that they are undercharging the town.
Okay, so they're undercharging, I'm not complaining.
You know, no.
You know, I'm not. Because everything that anybody's taking out there right now is five dollars. Okay, all right. Well, there was such a discrepancy, I just.
We thought it was a major.
But I'm not complaining now.
We are losing money on the dump.
Yes, we are.
Big money on the dump.
Discussion of possible action to approve ordinance allowing vault sewage dump.
And the attorney made a statement to me today, and he said he will have it by next month.
Okay. And he's gone?
Yes.
We will table that again. G is discussion of possible action to approve purchase of a new air-rated gun for the lagoons. We are taking our wastewater and putting it on Doyle Jones's property. He's got like seventy-five acres that we are allowed to take our lagoon water and shoot on. And he called me, and he says, hey, come out and talk to me, because this is the first time I knew about this. He used to work with Curtis on this, and then he worked with Pat on this, and then he's been working with Boney. And he said Boney does a wonderful job. He said that he, Boney's out there working really hard out there, and he said that it takes him two weeks to get across his property. And he wanted to know if we could discuss it and talk about maybe getting another gun out there to help take the sewer water away, and also, that would benefit him also. A new gun is almost forty thousand dollars. What, what this does, though, it does take our wastewater out of our lagoons and put it onto the land. He cannot grow anything on this land that is edible. He's been growing hay on part of it, and he's growing alfalfa on part of it.
You can't grow grain crop.
Right, yeah.
So, he had talked to me about this clip, and I think that we, and I may be wrong, got it in the budget this year to buy another one. The problem also is when one, we have two currently, when one breaks down, we're not able to, there's times in the summer that we need to discharge sewer faster than what we are able to, especially with a breakdown. So, it would be advantageous to the town to, to do it. Plus, those are, how do you think those are, Tiffany? They're, they're to the point, we may start adding some maintenance issues.
Are they cordial units, like on wheeled carts that you can reposition?
Yeah, they, they roll themselves.
Oh, it's like a irrigation?
Yes.
Okay, it's kind of static, tractor pulled, okay.
And then he also has a tractor out there to unhook it for one, and then go to another one, and then it will go out and come back in. And then he takes the tractor from that, and then moves it to the next one. Our, our personnel use it.
I think we should do it. Do you have a quote on that, or?
Yeah, it was thirty-nine thousand nine hundred. I forgot, I still have that.
Now, that will help pull your freeboard down, so you can give them more.
Right, yeah. Maybe he just sent that to me.
Did I hear you say we budgeted for that?
I thought we did, but I'm not swearing to it. Do you know?
I don't know.
How about if we do a little bit more research? I just wanted to bring this up, ready for discussion, and then let's put this on our agenda next month, and that way we'll have more information. But I just wanted you guys to know that I went out with Doyle, and he was very considerate, and he did like what we were doing right now, but he would like to do a little bit more if we could, you know? And that's just gonna benefit the town, because there's a lot of waste that goes through there. And so, we can keep a hand on that. So, let's go ahead and table that for right now.
You guys have stormwater runoff that runs through your sewer lines, and that fills your, that moves your freeboard up quickly on a train?
Yeah, you're right, you're right. We've been trying to find it.
Was that on the smoke test? Is that still being looked at to figure out where we're having issues? Wasn't that last year we did that?
We have a study that was completed a couple of months ago, because they, because I got a copy of the study. And so, it identifies a lot of the areas that need to be worked on. And right now, they're working on trying to get, because that came through money down to do that study, and so now, we're trying to see if there's money gonna come down to help us fix the problems, too.
We should put floats in manholes.
Yes, yes.
So that if there was a, a time where it rose real quickly during a storm event, we could find out where that's coming from, what area.
Yeah, I should have wrapped it up in a while, but I can say we're working on it.
And can we bring that information also to our next board meeting?
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. One on Seventh Street, I saw one time, on the south side of Seventh Street, water just gushing down, top of the, when we were getting flooded and ranked. I was like, that's not cool. Because it's, yeah, I mean, this was in the sewer water.
New business any matter not known, which cannot have been recently foreseen prior to the time of posting of the agenda, in accordance with the section three-one-one-dash-nine, title twenty-five O S. Citizen comment, excuse me?
We have new business.
Yeah.
We have new business?
Yes, we have a problem. It's a water plant. The drive went out, the VFD, this is what ramps the motor up and down, controls the speed of it.
Oh, that's this?
Yeah. This one.
Testing utilities.
Yep, this one.
Look, that's not it.
Is this like a computer garage, mechanical?
Unless it's two K.
Yeah.
And then it's, yeah, six thousand. Yeah.
Melissa, is this a computer drive or a mechanical?
Make a motion to the High Service Company to replace.
I'll second it. Real call, please.
Six thousand six hundred and sixty-six, six thousand six hundred dollars and sixty-six cents.
All right. Carol? Ravy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
David?
Yes. I apologize. Is there any new business? Okay. Citizen comments?
I have one. We're on agenda, but I'll, it's worthy. The pavilion footings will pour this week, and the pavilion itself will be delivered to energy metering in a while a week to be painted, and it will be erected before Thanksgiving.
Fantastic.
So, that's what we're at right now.
Thank you for the update. Thank you.
So, will that be ready to go by Christmas for maybe whistle down, I do down there?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just asking online.
Yes. Yeah.
That's great. Thank you. I sure appreciate it.
Oh, Richard. Sorry. It has a, it has a galvanized, galvanized roof, and it's gonna be like a dark, dark gray, a pink or dark gray. Sorry, Richard.
Can't touch it. Councilperson's report, Bert?
No.
Ravy?
No, I don't need that.
Carol? David?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. I'm making a motion to the chairman.
Second.
Real call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold? David?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.